Before proceeding with the agenda, I just ask for Ramona Salmons to be a term deal family for during his most difficult time. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Pleasure, Mr. President. Mr. Demondus passes the agenda. Second by Mr. Salvatore. Thank you. Any discussion? Very not all in favor. All against that pass is six nothing for the record. Chair Polio is absent this evening. Next, student government report. Do we have a student government report this evening? Welcome.
My name is Kerry Rosa.
And I'm Justin Wood.
At Cumberland High School, the past month, and the first day of school, the school year started with freshman students on August 27th, and grades 10, 11, and 12 started on August 28th, and it was a smooth transition for all of you. The Clipper Carnival was held on September 8th. All high school students traveled throughout the school to participate in activities such as offering Santos hit and tits show, a flag football game made to faculty, dodgeball game between the teach advisory, PBIS, educational theater, and outside games. Also, on September 18th, DHS held its annual back-to-school day. Parents were able to follow their child's schedule and meet with their teachers.
On October 7th, though, in the annual college fair held at McCoy Stadium, colleges from all throughout the country come and meet together so students can ask questions about college and find any specific majors that the colleges might have. On the week of the 14th of October, Spirit Week will be held. Spirit Week, the theme is TV and movies this year, and the theme is, we're ready for our close-up, Mr. Timmero. Spirit Week is an often less anticipated event, and this year is no exception. The Homecoming Dance, like every year, is on the last day of Spirit Week. It's on October 18th, and it's the Homecoming Globe Come, which means we're just going to have a bunch of glow sticks all throughout the auditorium where we can dance in a semi-formal event with our peers. And lastly, there will be a blood drive event this month. Cumberland High School often is very successful with our blood drives. Blood drives need hundreds of pints of blood a week, and we intend to help reach that quota, if not exceed, our previous year's expectations. Thank you for your recognition of the school debate.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes regular meeting 9/11/2014 and the approval of minutes executive session 9/11/2014. Pleasure, committee. Mr. Fearrell moves now to approve the consent agenda. Second by Ms. Teal. Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Here we go, all in favor. Both against, that pass is six nothing as well. Thank you. Next, we have a report out of executive session meetings. There was not an executive session meeting on 9/23/2014, and we did meet in an executive session this evening, 9/25/2014. There were no votes taken in an executive session. I do need a motion in open session to seal the minutes of executive session. Anybody want to help me out with that? Thank you, Mr. Demondus to seal the minutes of executive session. Second by Mr. Fearrell. Is there any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Those against that pass is six nothing. Thank you. Next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Thorne.
Hi, good evening. We're almost one month into the school year, approximately, and I just want to talk about the Chromebooks briefly. I can tell you, having walked the two-minute schools already one month in, it really has transformed how we teach and learn. I would ask that the committee, as you have time over the next month of October, to come in and join me in this, to walk the middle seat with yourself, but so far it is from my observations, it's really a hub in the building. Even the classroom setups are different. You're not seeing a person in the front in that kind of old mile. You're seeing groups of students in small pods. You're seeing all kinds of collaboration. But also, right after we talked, I wanted to have the two principals to share just for a minute what you've observed so far one month in. So if I could first go through Mr. Kaufman and Dr. Masterson.
So, thank you, Dr. Thorne. The first month, certainly, when we went into the school year, we did so with some expectations and hope that by October, the teachers would really move forward with the implementation of the one-to-one initiative. What we found when we started the school year, that within the first week, we saw a transition in many, many classrooms. And now that we've completed the first month, I can honestly say that every classroom has been positively affected by the transition. I'm just going to read. I asked the staff to provide some examples as to how Chromebooks has improved instructions. I'm just going to read a couple to you. Some of the answers were, students are able to complete work more independently and enjoy doing this. Many examples of the topics are provided. More interaction and more student-driven learning. I'm using a Google Classroom as a way of communicating with the students. By eliminating time spent at the copia, all students have been able to spend more time on their Chromebooks to explore scientific principles. And one teacher commented, I can't imagine ever going back to teaching and learning without it. All lessons have centered around the use of the Chromebook. So this is just a sampling of some of the teacher perspectives as to how the Chromebook initiative has improved instruction for them, and certainly, I do welcome you to come visit because you can see firsthand how it has improved student learning. Thank you.
So when we walked around the school and around the classrooms, I was quite impressed. This week, I walked into an English class, and it looked like it was learning tech. Every single kid had their Chromebook open, they were all typing. It was silent. All you heard was keyboard strokes. And when I looked at the teachers, they were on their computers, talking to the kids on their actual documents. So I know still we've had that interest with our writing rubrics. It's happening now, and kids are just benefiting from it. And the way that classroom works is, in the classroom, there's a comment from a teacher, and with the feedback, the kid makes the change, and then hits resolve. It's gone. So there's communication of when they make the changes and when they don't. Sometimes it's just, check this out, you don't have to change it, it's just a suggestion. So just the visual, I took some pictures, I sent them to Dr. Thorne around that classroom. We also, it's changed the way we've worked with students with disabilities. So we have students with IEPs, and we're trying to write combinations, modifications, and goals. We actually had a student who was transferring to a local district, and we had to actually look at the IEP and say, gosh, we have to move back to the old way. And it's just become so much about fabric of who we are and how we do business that we can't believe the way we did things before. And it's only been a month. And when we talk to teachers, and they have kids in other districts, or if I walk around the stadium, Mrs. Kaufman's, I would be in town for around middle levels, you take it for granted, you think everyone is doing what we're doing. And when we think about it, really not that many other people are. So it's really amazing that we're already at that point now, we've confirmed right now that this is where we're at.
Any questions in Congress?
Mr. Demondus. Dr. Masterson, have we distributed the bags for these cases for these?
Yes, they went out a week and a half ago. Mrs. Kaufman and I put out immediate messages when we were in the building for use, and we delivered them to each home room, both schools, the next morning, and the students walked around that day, and the kids, actually, one of the comments I got from teachers, they sent me, they made an email right to home room, they said, you have to see this. Kids are walking around saying, we look like we're going to college. And they take it more seriously. They walk around with a little more confidence.
Yeah, I would agree, exactly. And it certainly helped on a lot of different levels to keep the Chromebooks protected, and, you know, the students have it strapped along, their bodies this way, and they walk with confidence, and that's accurate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, good. Thank you. Next, we have the chairperson's report, which would be the standing line for funding formula in the EPM. I can offer a report, so there's absence, but we've got a couple ladies on the docket for their own talent to actually address these issues at the current time. Our report, standing committee, payment of bills. There were no payment of bills on the fiscal management docket this past Tuesday evening. We did meet September 2013, 14:05, so I'll move right into fiscal management subcommittee update. The big items on the docket that evening were the discussion of Bacon and Company's report on the school department's core and non-core expenditures for FY 2013. That's going to be further on down the docket, and I'm sure Mr. Pritnow will give us some info regarding that to the full committee. And we also spoke, talked about the discussion involving a possible RFP for the Rhode Island State Funding Formula impact and improvement BEP compliance. Next, policy and procedures subcommittee update. Chair President.
Thank you. We did meet on Tuesday at 6:30. One of the policies that was approved, and I'll bring it forth in a few minutes, was a change in the fee schedule for the school facilities. A couple of draft policies came before the committee. One regarding professional responsibility for certified professionals, another regarding teacher standards, and the draft policies will be on the website. And we also talked about a procedure for, a meeting procedure for the election of officers on the school committee. That's still in draft, and that will be discussed at the next meeting. Once again, I am tentatively scheduling, or actually, I'm not intentively scheduling, I am scheduling two policy meetings. One, October 7th at 6:30, and the next one, October 28th at 6:30. I'm trying to squeeze two more meetings in before Mr. Lotters no longer with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Achievement and communications subcommittee update. This will be the chairs, and I'm pretty sure that they did not meet at the last time anyway, so we'll update this evening. Public hearing, reading of policy, amended policies, A-K to use of school facilities. Mr. Chair.
So once again, a policy on Tuesday, there, Mr. Pritnow and Dr. Thorne brought forth some changes to the facility fees for out-of-town nonprofits and for-profit organizations in Cumberland nonprofits. The fees are to be more aligned with what local other districts are charging, and also to help us really more recover the cost of renting the facilities under our lower fees. We really didn't feel like we were covering the cost for whites, wear and tear, et cetera. The biggest change you'll notice is to the auditorium, that fee has gone up substantially. It takes a fair amount of wear and tear, and it was felt that that fee needed to be reflected. Change to reflect that. The rest of them are up, some are up, some remain the same, and some actually went down, but give or take, they're up about $5 per hour. So on a free-to-ovo, the fees were approved as presented, and I would read them in for the firsthand only hearing for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is anyone here in attendance who would like to speak on policy K2, use of school facilities? So we are in a lead intending action this evening?
Lead on, see.
Is this on, do you know if this has been posted on the website or at all? Any questions, Mr. Thorne?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, new policies, first reading, should be B3, school committee rules of conduct, B4, chairperson's scope of authority, B5, school committee meeting procedures and election of officers. G12, I'm just trying to, and I was having a policy, so G12, professional responsibility for certified professionals, and G13, teacher standards. Ms. Teal, were you prepared to read these this evening?
No, all of those policies have been tabled, and some have been combined, so we're not taking any action this evening on those policies.
Thank you, Ms. Teal. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone in attendance who'd like to address the committee at this time? Counselor Schmidt.
Okay, just wanted to let you know that I support your search to determine the difference between our funding formula. I think we are making short change. I don't know how we can quantify it, but I understand that you're going to hire an accounting firm in December, and if you do, I'm not sure what I can do for you on a council level, but just want you to know that I do support it, and please feel free to call me if you need anything.
Thank you, sir. Representative Lovett.
Chairman, members of the committee, I too would like to just share a little information that I have in reference to the Fair Funding Formula, Blackstone Valley Prop. Actually, Representative Jeremiah O'Grady, our last year, set forth a bill and a study commission, and he's moving forward with it this year in reference to Blackstone Valley Prop, their expenditures, so on and so forth. As you know, Lincoln has, you know, had money loss, and I had gotten a call from the chairman of the school committee in Lincoln, and Jay and I were actually talking about it in reference to the deficit that they're building in Lincoln. So I just wanted to share that information with you. If any one of you would like to contact Representative O'Grady, he can bring you up to speed on the commission and how it's being set forth. And there's also legislation in that was put in last year, and it will be back again this year in reference to Mabel Academies coming under the auspices of a local school committees. So there's been a lot going on at the State House, and I apologize for, you know, not sharing this with you earlier. It was just brought forth today in reference, I spoke with my ally Asian, Andy Andrade, from Ryan, and they're moving forward with a commission, so I hope there can be, you know, interaction between Cumberland School Committee and the state. You know, with that said, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We need your name.
My name is Lisa Holmes, and I am a resident here in the town of Cumberland. I just recently purchased a house. I grew up in Cumberland. I realize, out of you all here, I am clearly in the minority. I have two children that attend BVP. My daughter is in the third grade, and my son actually attended Cumberland High last year, and my son was in the ninth grade. He did not pass the ninth grade here. He had an IEP, and somehow or other, he did not pass the ninth grade here. He is now in the ninth grade at the BVP High School, and I realize his issues, there's problems with, you take up issues with, they take more money than they should. I don't get into that because I don't understand it. But I do think it's important that you all do know what a difference in education that my son, just in not even being there a month, has received from the education that he received here with an IEP at Cumberland High last year. And I don't think that they get enough credit for what they do there. The teachers that have reached out to me so far this year, the small class size, they have 100 kids there compared to how many hundreds of kids that were here, it's, I just don't think that when you guys have these issues with them, you guys realize the difference of education, that whatever money that they are getting, they're doing volumes with it. And like I said, I understand you guys are all pretty much, 99.9% of you in this room are against those charter schools, but I think you guys really need to understand how phenomenal that that school is. And that's it.
Thank you. I'd like to say that this, yeah.
I'm sorry.
First of all, I'm glad that it's working out well there. This issue that's on the docket right now is strictly an issue of funding and money following. It is not to say, it is not about BVP, it is about any charter school. It really should be about, well, that's where the discrepancy lies. But that, and it just happens to be that the biggest charter school entity is BVP, and I know, I'm certainly aware of the tension and things that have been said on both sides of the aisle, so, but the one that, what we're talking about tonight really is, it's really a math issue. It is not saying, it's not, in effect, actually, we're trying to get, at least me, I'd like to see it stop, this tension of pitting one against the other. So once again, I'm glad that's working out, and...
But it's just hard because it's like, you know, like, I went through a lot the last few months, and there's been like a lot of tears. I mean, I could cry right now if you knew what I went through as a parent, you know, having a child with an IEP that I didn't, I wasn't getting what I needed, and it was kind of the point where it was like, I didn't even know where, what I was going to do with him. But I was given this chance that he was able to go there and just to see him be in a setting because, you know, the, you know, Cumberland High School is, I'm not saying it's a bad school, but it's not a good fit for every kid. So I, as a single mom, can't afford to send my child to, you know, a private school, and I, it's just, I can't afford it. So for a school like that, it's nice that you are able to have options, but it's just frustrating, you know, I pick up the Valley Breeze every Thursday, it's like on the front page, oh, BVP this, BVP that, so it's just, as a resident of the town that has two kids there, it's just so frustrating to see that. And I understand it's an issue of money, but it's just, I just, you know, you guys don't have children there, so you would never know. But for me, it's like a heart issue, it's like, I just, I see where they're at, and I just see him even though he's repeating ninth grade, but yet, he's still slightly behind those other kids that are in ninth grade for the first time because he's behind.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee this time? We're kind of under comments from the public and public comments, kind of in that place. Anyone else? All right, we'll move to old business, discussion and vote to approve RFP, Rhode Island State Funding Formula impact improvement BEP compliance. Is Mr. Adams here?
Yes, sir.
I have my legal question of the evening. Obviously, SCR 2014-13 is the resolution that speaks to this RFP, right? Or am I missing this? It's not objected that way, so, you know? Am I misreading? SCR 2014-13, I'm actually asking the committee, that is not the, the way I'm reading it, is a resolution empowering the school committee to adopt a resolution to obtain the services of consulting. So there isn't anywhere on this docket that actually lists that resolution. It is, it is, the resolution is in fact the discussion of vote to approve the RFP. Are you following me? But because the resolution is not listed on the docket, do I have any legal problem Old business says discussion and vote to approve RFP. We don't...
I see that. I guess, looking at this without having the recall that we do with what SCR... It's not on the agenda, in other words, what I'm getting at.
No, the resolution is not on the agenda.
What you are empowered to discuss and vote on is to approve an RFP for Rhode Island State Funding Formula impact and improvement BEP compliance.
Right. And, you know... So, I'm just saying that technically, what we were looking to do, because we're not voting on an RFP anyway, which we don't vote on RFPs, we vote on, it was basically to say, to give the administration, are we okay to develop one, send them? We don't actually, we never vote on the RFPs that are sent out, and I don't think we should either. So what I'm saying is, can we just, I'd like to, do you understand what I'm saying? Oh, is that you?
Yeah.
It's just, it's just us saying, okay, we want the school department to send out an RFP to look for some services that are going to distinguish between the money following the child and whether, and the proportion of expenses that go along with that. Now, just because I have this in my Google Docs, I, no one else, it's not on the agenda. So I don't really, I don't need, I can't pass SCR 2014-13 because it's not there. So, but can I take action this evening to have the committee take a stance on whether or not they'd like the administration to proceed to formulate an RFP? Now that this is, yes, because certainly you can wait till the next meeting if we're...
But it, yes, you can do that because that's, I think, fairly noticed, but the, if you're being anal, it hasn't been noticed for a vote on SCR 2014-13.
Right.
But yeah, if you, what...
Well, I don't think the world's going to end if we hold off, and I, and perhaps I should have picked up on it, but I wasn't really sure, you know, I didn't know what the chair was, what our plans were. But I think at this point in time, there isn't an RFP to vote on. My feeling would be if no one has a problem, I think we use this time to discuss a little bit, but we put this resolution on the docket for next meeting, and then vote on it. That gives us some time. If Mr. Demondus brought up the discussion about some state action, so another couple weeks isn't going to, isn't going to hurt anybody. So I think, the way I'm looking at it, I don't know if I'm going to say we're being anal, but obviously, this docket's not, this thing isn't on the docket, and we're not voting on an RFP either. So neither one of them are really kind of on the docket.
And just so we're clear, when I used the word anal, that was a compliment, I'm telling you from a lawyer.
So that being said, so we're not going to, we're not going, we can't discuss this resolution, but obviously, it was in fiscal management, and I know the woman here was speaking about, you know, BVP, but it has really, and I do mean that, I'm glad that that choice worked out best because it should be choices, and I've said that before, but there is a fairness component that I think has not been addressed, and so we're looking to get a little more data to prove it, and to do that with, you know, we have data inside the district, but to certainly have an independent look at that would be more valuable in creating an argument that, you know, someone may listen to in the future, so. Anybody have any comments on this right now? Mr. Thorne?
I believe with Mr. McGlaugh, State Representative McGlaugh from the target of Overstill Grady in Lincoln, I think what we should do is move forward here with this study and see what transpires so we can actually talk about a fair funding formula. I agree with the woman as well, you know, some schools are not a fit for everybody, and I'm glad his son is thriving at the moment at that school, but you're right, it shouldn't be us against them, it should be just for the state to decide how to do this fairly so everyone is, and everyone's happy, so there's none of us versus them. And we discussed this in fiscal on Tuesday night, and was happy to see Tom McGlaugh from the Valley Breeze in his editorial as well. He was reading out mine on Tuesday night, so I think we should move forward, but we waited two weeks to do this, and the superintendent certainly knows our feelings from fiscal and how to proceed, how we want to proceed, I guess, so.
Thank you, Mr. Demondus. Anyone else? Mr. Fearrell.
I just want to point out that it seems like Mr. Representative O'Grady's bill is more about how BVP is spending their money, whereas I don't feel that is within our purview at all. I think this resolution has to only be about the fiscal impact that it has on a town like Cumberland, be sending so many students to the total of charter schools, not just in particular charter school. It'd be sending so many students to the total of charter schools, not just in particular charter schools. This is really about fiscal impact and how we're just not getting as much money from the state that we should be getting to support our students that are staying within our district.
Thank you, Mr. Fearrell. I, I agree. I also think, I have a problem, and this is no disrespect to anyone else, but I said that at the fiscal management. I think that we've been going down this road, which is strictly on the numbers with respect to the BEP and the funding formula. And I'm not really interested in putting it in anybody else's hands, although, because I'm not sure that their motivation and our intentions are the same as ours. And so, I wouldn't want to even be hooked up with it, although maybe as honorable as I believe ours is. But I wouldn't do that. But, you know, it'll take four votes to vote for something, though. Yeah, absolutely. And it is about, it isn't about one particular charter school. It is about the total charter schools, the total charter enrollment. And just the fact that as they rolled out the funding formula, I honestly, I think I said this last week, I certainly said it, I don't know if I did. I just think it, there wasn't, I don't think they figured that it could be that big of a number. I think if it was the, what would be considered a traditional number of thirty or forty students, something that, though sizable number, something you could overcome. I guess to a much bigger number, that becomes a different story. So, yeah, I'd like to see, well, we're not taking any action this evening anyway, but so it gives us a couple more weeks to fine tune that resolution if we need to. And Representative McGlothlin, if there's something that you can certainly look at ours and if, you know, I think everyone's open to, you know, putting out the best product, so... Is there anyone else? Mr. Fearrell.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that as we discussed in fiscal, we don't really believe that anybody meant to sort of change Cumberland. This is really about after, what, year four of the funding formula? It's now time to reexamine it and see what improvements could be made on it as just natural progression of any legislation.
Exactly. That's true. I'll let you come up, Representative McGlothlin.
I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, and members of the committee, I totally agree too. And I've been on this since oh eight, when the first Merrill Academy actually transpired. And if you recall, what actually transpired, and I've been saying it all along, is the state has a ton of money, okay? And the addition of the Merrill Academies wasn't included, you know, it wasn't incorporated. There was a period of four years from oh eight till twelve where Cumberland, even though they were being level funded, was actually putting money into the Merrill Academies because it was mandated by the state. So, yes, there is, is the, the formula itself needs to be readdressed. Will it be accepted? I hope so because we can't go on and run, right now, we're currently running two educational systems out of one partner. And this wasn't even mentioned when the first Merrill Academy was set forth. And the difference between oh eight up until oh twelve, the Cumberland, the share of money from the state did not change. They were level funded from oh nine on. So, you had a snowball effect. Everything just kept, you know, even transportation, you know, I had many discussions with Chairman Bowley, you know, on this. So, when you compile everything, yes, there needs to be reform, okay? You know, at a state level. More monies needed, need to be added, and I've been stating this since they opened, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any else? Okay, so we'll see this back in the resolution form for the next meeting. Next, under new business, we have MECA science assessment results, spring 2014-2015. Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. We had hoped to share the MECA science results with you this evening, but unfortunately, we can't, and I'll explain why in just a second. The students take the science MECA in the spring, actually in May of 2014 in grades four, eight, and eleven. And we received the results on Monday, September fifteenth. And the scores are embargoed for a week. So, we have a chance to look at them and then, and review them in detail in district and by school. And then the state opens them up to the public. Well, when they were released a week ago and, and schools started to dig in, there was some concern with the results. Especially at the middle level. It wasn't just the middle level, there's also, there was also some concern with the results at the elementary level. But there were several anomalies that, you know, that didn't make any sense. Students who had performed relatively well on the whole assessment, there were like three or four questions where very few, if any, students got any points for the questions. So, even high achieving students did not perform well on a number of questions. Now, we realized that when we reviewed our results, but it, it was apparent that other districts had some, not to be overly dramatic, but had some major concerns as well. So, several districts, Dr. Thorne, I would say at least ten or twelve districts were so concerned with the, you know, with the significant drop in performance and the results on specific questions that they contacted the Rhode Island Department of that. And I think there was enough concern expressed by all of the districts that RIDE decided to extend the embargo. So, they are in fact, so RIDE is consulting with Measure Progress, the company that developed and actually provides the test to the state and all the other northern states. They are looking in more detail at the results. And as soon as we, you know, hear from them, we'll certainly present the results to you. So, there are some concerns with the validity of the results. That is the, and why I'm not able to, we're not able to shed on this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
Mr. Demonic. Chairman, just want to point out that statewide embargo, it's just not a Cumberland embargo, so it's for the whole state that can't release the results.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have discussion or vote to approve 2014-2015 school bus routes. This is actually a function of the school committee that they need to approve these each year. It's had some colorful points in the past, but certainly not in recent memory, which is a good thing. Do you have any comments? Just once again, a really strong opening by the bus company. We're really happy with the start of the school year. As you said, Mr. Demonic, it's a red passage you have to each year approve for sort of a year. Actually, it's a red passage that didn't achieve passage for quite a while. Or so it was red out and it wasn't exercised. But this time, actually, I think we're like within the thirty days, like this is like, I don't know, this could be the first time, actually. So, that being said, I know everyone has received all those routes and has scouted and must have a lot of questions. So, anybody here? You do? Pleasure to the committee.
Make a motion to approve the 2014-2015 school bus.
Mr. Demonic moves a passage of the fourteen-fifteen school bus route to second by Mr. Salvatore. Is there any further discussion? Is there anybody from Durham on? Wayan, good evening.
Good evening, yeah, Dottori. I just wanted to make all of you aware that the contract did call for some new buses and they are flowing in. We have four of them registered, the four mini buses. Fifteen of them came in within the last ten days. And we should have another twenty-five of them on the road within the next ten to twenty days, so. And we'll probably bring them here for everyone to see. Probably roll them out one day all at once, so I just thought you may like to hear that. So, they look great, the buses, the new buses.
Thank you. virtual motion in a second as to any further discussion. All in favor? Those against? A passage six to nothing. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and vote to approve homeschool instruction request for the 2014-2015 year. Are there any? I believe there are six or so. I recommend approval, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Pleasure to the committee. Mr. Fearrell moves to approve the homeschool instruction request on the docket for the fourteen-fifteen year. Do we have something? Second by Mr. Teal. Any discussion on that motion? Having it all there. Those against a passage six to nothing. Thank you. Next, we have discussion of vacant companies' report on school departments' core and non-core expenses for fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand thirteen. I see Mr. Pignano in the audience. Could you just come up for a minute? Do you have it in front of you?
I'm familiar with it.
If you're familiar with it, you're welcome. For full disclosure, you want to just go over that for a minute?
Sure, I think most of the committee members are kind of familiar with it now. What we, you know, we've had this discussion about BEP and core and non-core expenditures going on for quite some time. So, what was, I think the pleasure of the committee was that, you know, my office had pulled together some, some numbers that go back since the beginning when we started the funding formula. And I think to have credibility outside the district, we wanted to have our town auditor, which is the auditor that the town hires. We don't hire the auditor, we use the same auditor that the town does. We wanted to have them look at the on-core and non-core expenditures to verify our numbers because, if you recall, we put out a report saying that basically, we felt we were being short-changed by the town to meet the BEP number by about four point nine million dollars in a report that we passed out during the budget season. So, maybe March or whatever, March or April. So, basically, what we did to try to keep the cost of this thing down, because there are really thousands and thousands of line items in the journal ledger, we can code the uniform charter accounts and how everything has to be coded now. We had the auditor examine our non-core expenditures, which are, there's about ten or twelve categories there. So, if we had those non-core expenditures correct, then our four point nine million dollar number would be at worst, you know, the most conservative it could be. Because if we coded a non-core expenditure, we coded a million dollars of, you know, retiree benefits, the school books. You know, that would have been, you know, way understating our non-core numbers. So, it would have been, so by her just examining the non-core numbers, we were gonna get the most conservative number that would be owed, it'd be a minimum number. So, what she did is she went through that, and what she did find is she found in the eighteen million dollars of non-core expenditures, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in net duplicate items. I'll tell you how that happens, like, for example, if you look at just our, if you just put in the object code for retiree benefits, you come up with three point nine million dollars. But in that three point nine million dollars, there may be some dollar amount that's charged in federal programs. So, and when you picked up the federal program, something like that got double counted. So, anyhow, what she did is she made a net adjustment. You can see in front of you, I think you all have the worksheet of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. And she adjusted the number of the four point nine million down to four point seven change. And that was, and so, and I think she mentions in her letter that she didn't see any errors in the, in our coding and functions and object codes and stuff. So, that would be the minimum number, I guess, that we would get to. So, I don't know if there's any questions. I think everyone's seen it, you know, we've talked about it quite a bit. Try to answer any questions if you have them.
Any, do we have any questions? I mean, so, obviously, our intent was that at the budget time, you know, we presented our numbers to the council with respect to the BEP. And your work had shown that it was four point nine million dollars less. And, you know, I mean, that we're to be compliant with the BEP on the local level, if you will, by state statute, deemed aspirational, but not by the state statute, it was four point nine. We used a town auditor to double check your numbers and they came up with a number, you made a couple of adjustments, and it's four point seven million.
Right. And in the same report, you notice the state owes three point, three and a half million dollars roughly. And the point we were making is the state, though, has a seven-year plan. They're in year four, as someone just asked what year we were in the formula. So, they have a plan to meet that three million dollars in three years. Theoretically, that money will all come to us in state aid. And what we were looking for at the time was the town to somewhat, you know, develop a plan with the town to address the other piece of it, whether it would be that type of plan over a time period or whatever. And I guess that discussion will continue as we go along here.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that's what will happen over the next, Chairman. I have to, I didn't recognize anybody, but we have Mr. Duffy in the audience, and he'll be part of that solution. But, you know, so is it safe to say that with us four point seven short on the BEP and, you know, and that's supposed to be responsible on the local level? But if you, if you were to find out after the RFP and the study's done and you were to come up with the fact that that was just a rough, you know, split it in half, and you're a couple million short on that aspect of the equation, does that automatically transfer the lower that number down to, you know, as far as like the gap?
Not sure.
So, let's say you, by the state funding formula, you know, the money following the child, but not the expenses. And by some miracle, the formula gets adjusted and that difference gets funded to the, to the town of Cumberland and other communities. This is purely hypothetical. The gap would, would be reduced by that amount.
Yeah, and I, and I think, and I think we need to go forward with that because we need to, I think people pretty much know it, but no one has proven it. That, you know, it's not a one-to-one correlation. I had some discussions that I could share them with you a little bit on the phone the other day, Mr. Chairman, about, I think, one of the issues that I would have if I was a state legislator would be, okay, if I do make up this money, how do I, okay, I give you, you know, we have, we owe five, we have to increase our budget five hundred thousand next year for charter schools. And we, they passed something that says, you know, after two hundred and fifty thousand, the state picks it up. The state, I think, would have a fear that the town would just say, oh, beautiful, they're giving two fifty, we'll give two fifty less. And I think that's gonna be, somehow, that's gonna have to get fixed into the equation. Or the town with no requirements to fund, you know, there's no law requiring them to fund it, like the state, the state law is mandated. I mean, they could stop at any time, but at least there's a plan there. Without towns being forced to fund it, I think there'd be some fear, if I was in the journal someday, that the town would just then cut back their contribution. If I, if we pick up the ball for them, the town councils would just all, oh, great, you know?
I get that, but what I'm saying is, it's part of, and like I say, the new committee and even members of the council, if that number was, you know, when it was, you know, projected or presented to the council and, you know, it was a number close to five million, if that number is closer to two, two and a half, then there's a plan, and we spoke about that.
Yeah, it becomes a little less daunting.
Yeah, and it becomes something that you could conceivably, if you, you know, with the will, you could plan, it would make for an easier plan, let's say.
Yeah, and one thing I just caution too, the core and non-core, they're, I mean, the items that you would find in the BP and those core expenditures, but they're not interchangeable terms. Core and non-core expenditures don't really meet or equal to BEP all the time. Though teacher education's in the core and just, you know, school supplies and all those type of things that you would also find in the BP. And not exactly a one-to-one correlation.
Right. Okay, well, we know this is, this will certainly be discussed more as members on, once again, is anybody else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pignano. Next, we have communication from superintendent regarding volunteer BCI fees, Dr. Thorne. Turn to Mrs. Foal.
Thank you. So, as you're aware, the school committee had passed a policy last year mirroring state law requiring that all volunteers in the schools have a Rhode Island background check. So, because the, due to that, we started last year with registering our volunteers and ensuring that they receive the appropriate background check. Over this last legislative session, there were some amendments made to that law, so we held off a lot, we didn't go into full, you know, we weren't requiring, we weren't really pushing hard because we weren't sure what the changes were gonna be to the law that was indifferent. And then, in June, the legislature came out with a law that was very similar, but added some other kind of... but added some other kind of volunteers that didn't necessarily need to have direct contact with the students. That's what the first law said, they need to have absolute direct contact. Second law kind of changed that a little and basically said, any person volunteering in the school needed to have a BCI. So once that came, we had a plan, starting at the beginning of this school year, the 2014-2015 school year, to disseminate forms and to assist our parents who wanted to volunteer in the schools to have the BCI. It's done. Dr. Thornton had a conversation with Chief Demarest in the springtime of 2014. And the plan was that we were going to, we were going to be the clearinghouse. My office was going to be the clearinghouse. We were going to batch them. And by that, I mean, we were going to send them as we got them. And then they would receive, return the completed BCI's to us. We would keep a record and then we would let the schools know who the approved volunteers were. So at the beginning of the 2014-2015 school year, we developed a volunteer disclaimer form and we sent it out to all of the schools. And really worked mostly with the building secretaries, who would be the ones handling, also notifying, obviously, the principals. But we had indicated, based upon the communications that we had had with the police department at that time, there would be no charge for these BCI's. We received, at the very beginning of the school, we received approximately 41 completed BCI's, which we then batched and sent to the police department. And at that point, on September 4th, I received a communication from the chief's administrative staff indicating that the police department had actually enacted a policy effective July 1st of 2014, that there would be a $5 charge. Ms. Tweedy and I went back and forth because we had not been notified about that charge. And ultimately, the position of the police department was that the $5, regardless of our notice, the $5 charge would stand. Because of that, I then sent a communication to the building secretaries, changing that volunteer disclaimer form and indicating that not only did we need a copy of the person's license, but we also needed a check for $5. I did then receive a communication from Ms. Tweedy indicating that that first 41 BCI's that I received, that I sent to them and that they had batched back would be free of charge. Dr. Thornton and I had a conversation, and I do know that he maybe spoke with some of the school committee members about honoring our word, about how we had indicated that, you know, these would be free of charge. And while I know that there's some conversation about whether or not the school department should be responsible for paying for volunteers to be registered, we were very concerned about the fact that we had put out the message that they would be free of charge. We have looked through the HR budget and, without increasing my budget at all, I do have some funds from something that we had, I don't want to say overestimated, but we thought would have come in a little higher than it did to pay for the BCI's that we have. I have approximately 250 BCI's pending that I have not sent to the police department because I obviously do not want to take any action without speaking to the school committee about how to proceed. I will indicate that I have received some disclaimer forms since I sent out that second communication with checks attached to them, a few envelopes of cash, which I have not opened, they remain sealed, I haven't touched them. But there, I have received some checks from, from parents who want to volunteer because of that second communication. I have not processed any because obviously, we wanted to relay that information to you. And I know that it's not on the docket for a decision to vote or anything like that, but it was more for me to notify you as to what our process was and where we were at this point.
Okay, so at this, so at this point, we have, whatever, we have these forms that have been, are sitting on someone's desk, but they're not being processed, but waiting some decision?
Well, they're sitting on my desk. I just didn't, I didn't want to, I don't know if this is a, I didn't want to make the school department responsible, if I was, if the decision was then, to send them back to the schools to say to everyone, hey, we're really sorry, we need a $5 check in order to process these. I just didn't want to take, I did not feel that there's no policy or, it wasn't under my purview to make that decision. So we, they are sitting on my desk. Mary and my assistant has cataloged them, so we know what we have. And there are approximately 250 disclaimer forms waiting to be processed. I do anticipate probably another 50. I've gotten a bulk of them. I think, you know, we really did a push at the beginning of the school year. I would think that probably through the course of the year, there might be a few more trickles as parents realize that in order to go on a field trip, they need to have a BCI check. You know, a parent that works that, you know, doesn't think they'll ever get into the school, who then realizes, oh, I can take a personal day and go on a field trip. I might get a few more trickle-through, but I think we've received a good number of the BCI disclaimer forms that we'll receive.
Is this inhibiting any volunteers at different schools? Or is this, or?
Well, we have not approved volunteers yet at this point. Under the state law, they're required to get them prior to or within a week of volunteering. So at this point, we have held off. Thankfully, there have not been any, the events are coming soon, though. You know, as October comes on, there'll be Halloween dances and things like that, where parents are going to need to be BCI'd in order to. And we've had this conversation about who needs a BCI. Something like a, let's say, some of the PTO's do a Halloween dance, where the parents participate with the student. That's different. That doesn't require a BCI. You're going with your child to an event. That's different than we're having a, some of the schools do a trunk and treat, let's say, and I go with my child, but I am also a volunteer and I work the event more. So I'm not really with my child, I'm working the event. That person would need a BCI. So we're working, we're notifying the PTO's and we're kind of working through some of those nuances with them as well.
Okay, I mean, I'm in agreement. I think that, I don't, I don't think that in general, that the $5 fee should be something that should stop someone from being a volunteer. But as you said, it was represented at the onset that it, you know, there would be no charge and that, and especially when there would be certain people who already have received the okay, that they would be done free as a fairness issue. And I don't think it breaks anybody either side. So what actually do you, I mean, do you, are you looking, I don't, I'm not sure you even need an okay to do so, because you could have a subsequent budget amendment or, you know, transfer if you wanted, you know, but obviously, unless somebody, unless somebody here is against that kind of, obviously, we want to inhibit the volunteer. I think you're mindful of the fiscal tightness, different than what you had. Do you want to issue to correct and we want to bring it to your attention? To stay sure he's by the numbers. Or? Yeah, I'm all for that, you know, so I mean, in the way, I think that you brought it in front of the committee. There's going to be a time for the committee to say, look, there's no way I want to support that move. And then you'd know. But if you didn't get that, then I think you could move on and then at the next meeting, you know, make the subsequent line change. Because I mean, I think that is the right thing to do. You know, you just add that, you know, amend some line and add a new one, and you're done. I know Mr. Prignano loves those, but that is.
Well, I think the line I own that, these costs would come out as an HR purchase services, and she's got a $10,000 budget there and won't require all that. You know, we still haven't hired the person, the services that we want out of there. So there's, there'll be a little play in there, even if we get to sometime during the year, but it'd be the same, a comparable purchase services.
But this year, BCI's would be on the HR purchase services.
Yep.
I, it's not, you know, I, that's not one I couldn't live with. Just, I don't know. That's not one I couldn't live with. Anyway, Mr. Monica.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should move on these as soon as possible and pay the fee and we'll deal with it next year. Our state rep is here, maybe he can file an amendment to the bill and make it so that our schools, every school district in the state has to do this. Maybe we get permission to have someone from the school department be able to run the BCI checks instead of going through the police department. You know, if we have 200 or 250 kids there, I mean, that's 12, 13, 14, 15 hundred bucks going to cost us. If every police department is doing that across the state, maybe, because you started the law a year at the legislature that you fixed the law and we let the school districts be able to run the BCI check. That's all. All right, ready, moving forward now.
Mr. Salvatore, thank you, Mr. Monica.
Thanks, Chris Folke. Though I, I do have a concern, not for this year, but pertaining to next year. Just maybe a recommendation, I don't know if the parent, if we don't resolve this, if the parent can just go to the police station with the form. I get nervous that sending in cash or sending in a check is coming to us, we'll pass it to them. Resources being used here, there.
We obviously wouldn't accept cash, so, but I love, because I wasn't sure of where this was going, it's in the sealed envelope, I wrote a little note on it. Those will, those will be returned to the school. We will require, if we continue to be the clearinghouse and whether the parent is required to go to the Cumberland School Department themselves, receive the BCI and then produce it to us. I think when we enacted the policy, the idea was we were trying to not deter people from volunteering, so we were trying to make the process as easy as possible. And that's why my office was kind of both monitoring as well as batching and sending so that we could, you know, make it easier for the parents. Because we didn't, the whole idea was to comply with the state law and not to deter people from volunteering. I will say that, you know, while we'll maybe take our lumps this year and, you know, it'll come out of that purchase service, next year, this same message wouldn't be broadcast that it was free of charge. And therefore, I don't think I would feel as badly. I just felt that, you know, it was my word. I sent the email out and the form said free of charge because that's what we believed was the case. And then I think Dr. Thornton and I both felt, you know, that we wanted to stick to our word regardless of what other decisions were.
I support that decision as well. I think the communication error, whether it was in the town or with us, I think we need to do the right thing as it pertains to the BCI checks and the volunteer teams. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. Any more? Ms. Till?
I just would suggest that it goes back on the policy agenda then, early this year. So that the next policy chair could work on it.
You keep referring to the next chair. And I'll be sure to do that. And we'll make, and what we'll also do is we'll make sure, I do not believe that our current policy is, there's any issues with the new law that passed in June, but we'll go through that one more time. If we're going to put it back on the docket, we'll just make sure that everything is. And we can make a decision as to whether or not you want the parents to go directly to the police in policy, if that's a change that the committee would like to make. Okay.
Any more?
Mr. Fiora. I think we should still be mindful to have as few roadblocks to volunteering in these schools as possible. There are so many, I know there's a lot of book fairs coming up and that. Every little thing seems to dissuade a parent from volunteering to school. So we should be mindful of that.
Agreed. And again, that's why my office, while I have nothing, you know, my office was the clearinghouse in order to attempt to try and make the process and the procedure as easy as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Folke.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Salvatore. All right, next, discussion and a vote to approve amended policy. This is K2 use of school facilities. Ms. Till.
So as I said earlier, on the 3-0 vote, the fee schedule's been updated to reflect new fees in order to more accurately cover the costs, expenses of managing our facilities. So I would ask that the fees be approved as presented. And they are, in fact, on the website. The new fees are on the website.
Is that, are you making a motion to approve K2 use of school facilities? Is that as amended?
As amended, yes.
Ms. Till makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Salvatore. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Those against? A pass is six to nothing. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and a vote to approve first reading of new policies. These were, Ms. Till moves to table all of the, the policies new rated under G, seconded by Mr. Salvatore. All in favor? Those against? That is tabled. Are you tableing that for the next meeting? Or do you, you just want to leave it now? Let's not pick a date, right? Because you don't know. Okay. Next, personnel recommendations. Dr. Thornton.
It's a late night, apparently, one personal recommendation for you. So it's a resignation. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the resignation of David Canning, special educator in North Cumberland Middle School, effective June 30th, 2014.
A key pleasure of the committee. Mr. Fiora moves to approve the recommendation, as I mentioned, as well. Seconded by Mr. Depp. Are there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Those against? A pass is six to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, school committee comment, school liaison reports. Is there anyone on the school committee that has a comment or liaison report? Mr. Fiora?
On Monday, I had the pleasure of being at BF Norton for Alan Trump Feinstein's visit to that school, where he presented a total of $10,000 to the school. He was very engaging with the kids. The kids really seemed to enjoy his visits. And he was also at Garvin on Tuesday, presenting another check for $10,000. So I'd like to thank Mr. Feinstein for that.
Thank you, Mr. Fiora. Is there anyone else? No other comments, no liaison reports? Okay, I need a motion to go into our executive session for items referred to over to General Law 42465. And before taking that vote, I shall, the school committee shall state for the record that any persons to be discussed pursuant to subsection one